Under each slide.
I'm ready. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We are now convening the Public Safety Committee of the Baltimore City Council. I am Councilman Brandon Scott, Chair of the Committee. I am joined to my far left by Councilman Leon Pinkett from the Seventh District, Member of the Committee. To his right, Councilman Eric Costello from the Eleventh District. We are also joined by Councilman Zeke Cohen to my far right from the First District, Member of the Committee. We are also joined to the attorney to the Baltimore City Council and by Richard Crumrich, Staff of the Committee. Mr. Commissioner, thank you. This is the hearing for City Council Resolution eighteen dash zero zero nine two R. Council stat with the Baltimore City Police Department in reference to violent crime. Mr. Commissioner, for how do we typically do this? We'll start with you. We will ask you first to give us an update of where we are year-to-date in the most pressing categories in the city versus last year and if you have it versus 2014. So that will be for us, year-to-date, that would be homicides, non-fatal shootings, robberies and for year-to-date. And then what we'll, what we like to do then is we go through each of the, of the districts looking at their, their violent crime for the year, talking about the most significant recent incidents and any patterns that we're seeing that we can discuss in a public forum without giving out too much information so that the council is more informed, but more importantly, so that we can get information out to the citizens. So we'll turn it over to you to start from the beginning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Committee. Giving you an overview of our violent crime, homicides, year-to-date, I think we're at sixty-one compared to fifty, that's a twenty-two percent increase year-to-date. Non-fatal shootings across the city, we're at one hundred and seventeen compared to ninety-one, that's a twenty-eight point six percent increase. When it comes to robbery, the total numbers, they're at nine hundred and seven year-to-date compared to one thousand and forty. Now, that's a thirteen percent decrease. Commercial robberies, one hundred and eighty-one compared to one seventy-five, that's up three percent. But street robberies are seven hundred and twenty-six compared to eight sixty-five, that's down sixteen percent. So when it comes to robbery, we're seeing a total of a thirteen percent decrease overall. Aggravated assault, we're showing nine hundred and one compared to nine hundred and eight, that's a, down seven incidents or one percent. Burglaries, one thousand and thirteen compared to twelve fourteen, it's down seventeen percent. So even though that's a property crime, not a violent crime, we're showing a decrease in that. We're also showing in auto thefts, seven hundred and forty compared to eight eighty-seven, that's down seventeen percent. Arson, seventeen compared to thirty-two, that's forty-seven percent. So our total violent crime is one thousand nine hundred and seven compared to two thousand seventy-eight, overall down eight percent. Total property crime, forty, four thousand five hundred seventy-eight versus four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine, down seven percent. And total Part One crimes, which is all of our crime, property and persons, six thousand four hundred eighty-five compared to seven thousand seven, that's down seven percent. And so the outliers are homicides and non-fatal shootings, because robberies are, are down and only up three in commercial robberies.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Commissioner, and I don't know if the Deputy Commissioner or someone has their comparisons to 2014?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone, again. So for homicides, in 2014, we had forty-one homicides compared to sixty-one at this particular time in 2019. I do not have that percentage for you. Total homicides, total shootings in 2014 were forty-eight compared to a hundred and seventeen for this year at this time. I'm sorry, up to three sixteen. Robberies, six hundred and ninety-one in 2014 compared to nine oh six, and those are the three categories that I'm carrying right now.
Yeah.
So we are showing a, an increase to the Commissioner's point as well. An important thing to note, we recognize that a lot of our violent crime is, is occurring in West Baltimore, and we are, you know, making several deployments and strategies to deal with the crime of violence that's been occurring there. A couple of anomalies that we've had this year, and I'm sure many of you are aware, is the Southeast District. They are up. Typically, I think they had like twelve homicides last year, and they're already up at around five or six?
Seven.
Seven. So that is obviously of concern for us. We've had some issues there along the border of the Eastern District that we have been dealing with as well. Looks like that we are making some progress on that front. West Baltimore continues to drive us at around almost forty percent of the violent crime in the city.
Thank you. And actually, we'll do this a little differently. I know, we know that the Weekly Packet is not out. We normally have these hearings on Wednesday, it's on a Tuesday, so the Weekly Packet is not out to my colleagues. That's why we don't have the total citywide numbers, because the information is not available until tomorrow, and we had to move the hearing because of previous scheduled arrangements. So what we would like to do, Mr. Commissioner, is we'll go, we'll actually do it based on this. We'll go through the areas, and since that area, we'll start with Area One first and just go by district. So we'll start with the Central District. And I know, Colonel, if you could talk about, even though we don't have them in front of us, if you could tell us what the...
I can give you the numbers from la, I got the numbers from last week.
Oh, yeah, we, and we have them from last week, yeah. We could go through those numbers as well.
Yeah, basically, what you've got in the Central District, they are down sixty percent in homicides, two compared to five. They're up sixty-seven percent in non-fatal shootings, ten compared to six. Robberies, they are right even, one oh seven compared to one oh seven. The big thing with that is they've put together, they saw a robbery pattern early on, and they've put together a robbery response team. So over the last seven days, the robberies were down forty-six percent, and over the last twenty-eight days, they were down fifteen percent, and those guys have made some significant arrests. And it's only, I think, three officers, sergeant and three. Aggravated assaults are down twenty-four percent. Burglaries are up thirty-two percent. Larcenies are up thirty-one percent. Auto theft is down thirty-one percent. Total violent crime is down fourteen percent, and property crime is up twenty-three percent, and the total is up twenty-three percent.
Thank you. Before we go any further with the Central District, I'd like to defer to my colleague, Councilman Costello, for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whatever you guys have been doing in McCullough Homes in Upton has been working. I really appreciate the additional attention there. I know we had a spat of armed robberies in, in Mount Vernon, and things, it sounds like things have quieted down there.
The Western, the, the Major and the Captain put together a really good plan from McCullough Homes, and we basically have coverage around the clock there, but we have the officers, instead of what we did recently, instead of just cars sitting still, they're, they're moving around. So they, it's keeping the criminals on the move as well. But they put together a really good plan.
It seems to be working, and I really appreciate it, and same with Mount Vernon. And any updates on the, continued bank robberies?
Yes. So we have a couple of patterns with the bank robberies. Just taking a look at, I can't get too deep into this because we're working with the FBI, but I can tell you, we are working on two of the cases or two suspects we already have identified, and we should be moving in those pretty soon, so I'm pretty optimistic about that. As far as the patterns go, as you know, we're looking at the past-to-know commercial robbery pattern, the outer bind pattern as well. So we have some movement in those cases. I would like to see the robbery detectives actually do better follow-ups, and we talked about that before, so we're working on that, that process as well. But as of right now, that's where the patterns go, and especially the commercials you're talking about as far as the bank robberies.
Yeah, I was going to save that comment for the end, but since we last chatted, there's been a noticeable reduction in complaints about that, so thank you for adjusting accordingly, and the detectives have been great, so.
It's good to hear. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Pinkett?
No, I just wanted to echo my colleague's comments related to the work that's happening in Central, and commend Major Gaines and his team for the work. I do want to just keep on our radar, the Druid Heights area, especially around Druid Hill and Bloom. It's really been a troubled area for us. I know that recently there were additional officers placed in that area, but, and so that, those residents were able to get some relief. I just hope that, that is a consistent presence in that area.
Yes. Councilman, I was through that area today. We have a contingency up there. We are aware of those issues and situation that's going on there. Obviously, we had some violence there recently. So yes, we are deployed in there, and we will continue to be there, and we're working, obviously, with the Central and the Western to deal with those issues up there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we go back a little bit in the non-fatal shootings, right? Can you guys tell, tell us if they are located in one specific area or they're sparse out over the district, and where these incidents happen?
So first, let's talk about five hundred Bloom, the quintuplet.
Oh, yeah.
We know that all those victims are there. We do have a person of interest. As you know, it's been pretty tough with getting witnesses to come forward and sign, sign photo arrays and, and move forward with that, but we're, we're working through this. We do have a person of interest in that case. If you take a look at Karma Street downtown, we do have a person of interest for that case as well. And then we have the walk-in at twenty-two South Green Street, which is still open, and I can't really go into that. But as a whole, in the last twenty-eight days, homicides and shootings in the Central District, I feel pretty comfortable about the case progression.
Thank you. With that being said, first, I'd like to recognize my colleague from the Fifth District, Councilman Isaac Gieschi Scheifler, Member of the Committee, and we will move on now to the Southeast District, Colonel.
Got you. The Southeast District, as the Deputy Commissioner said, they are up a hundred and thirty-three percent in the homicides. You have seven compared to three, which is an anomaly for them. Byron, did you want to go into that?
Yeah, so...
Pick the mic up for that.
I'm sorry.
I saw you picking up, so.
So, so if you take a look at thirty-seven hundred block of East Lombard Street, that's a concern of ours. We've had a few incidents there. May Court is another place of concern. So just looking into, we have a person of interest for the thirty-seven hundred East Lombard Street, but, but as you know, we're just trying to turn that, that, the next page to try to get that case down. It looks as if, you know, from geography, all of them are related, but when you do, you look in the backgrounds of the victims, there are some, some, some differences there. So that's as much as I can say on that, on that front. Colonel Worley?
Non-fatal shootings are nine compared to seven last year, so total was fifteen homicide shooting victims compared to ten. And part of that was also, we, we noticed at the end of last year and the beginning of this year, we were seeing an influx of Monument Street. The Eastern District has the two dry dis, two DAT teams associated at the Monument Street. So what the, what told the Eastern and Southeast to do was get together and come up with the plan, so they've actually dropped that deployment down several blocks into the Southeast, and I think we've kind of pushed them away from, away from that, so it's had a good impact over there. Rapes, which is kind, is significant considering the amount of clubs and bars that are in the Southeast, they have zero rapes this year compared to ten last year. Robberies, they're doing outstanding job, one twenty-seven compared to one seventy-one, which is minus twenty-six, and that's mainly the robbery deployment we put in place and also what Byron, Colonel Conaway is getting ready to talk about.
No, I was just chiming in on the, the robbery detail. Most of you guys know that's pretty much every day, and we try to follow up with victims that are, are, that, that actually, they come out during the time that they're deployed. I also put them in a box to make sure that they're not just kind of roaming. I want to make sure that they focus in on the areas where we see the consistent issues.
Thank you. So I guess I'll start, and actually, I'll start with Mr. Amheros, because I think that the last incident on thirty-seven hundred East Lombard, I think, is one where the proper coordination, or let me just say, not coordination, the proper action by other agencies may been able to help us. So for example, in that, in that specific incident, Mr. Amheros, Major Brown and I were alerted to a problem at a vacant house on the thirty-seven hundred block of East Lombard, which we refer to Housing and DPW. The, the property was actually boarded up by the homeowner because some people kept breaking in and living in there. And what is upsetting to me is that when we go out and we inspect one house on the block to see that kind of situation, we're supposed to check the others in the block, and we ended up having three doors down from this initial incident, residence, we, is where we had the shooting. And I think that if we had properly done our jobs and seen that, that, that property was open to casual entry, we would maybe not have had a shooting there because they did it inside. So I think it's important that even when it's outside of the VRI areas, that our other agencies are making sure, and it's not that they weren't talking to them because I'm on the email chain, but someone has to make sure that the person out doing the inspection is actually not just looking at the one house that we complained about, but making sure that they look at the whole entire block. Because this is an incident where, you know, the Major literally did everything that she could to, to make sure that these, these neighbors who are emailing and calling us both at all hours of night got results from us, particularly about the house they were complaining about, and the agency did not take the action to do it further. I think this, Colonel Conaway, the next one will be for you. I think this, we've seen a great, I'll be just talking about the reduction in the, in the robbery there, in particular, the commercial robberies dropped so significantly. Do you think that the commercial robbery had something to do, drop also had to do with the robbery detail that we put out, because we had six in the twenty-eight day, and then now, which it seemed like they fell off the map?
Yes, I would love to say that it affected the commercials, but I'm going to stick to the streets. In fact, if you take a look at some of the pattern cases that we've had throughout the 2019 year, we closed a couple of them, small handgun pattern and mass mayhem, looking at raising that clearance rate by, by a significant amount, because we're going to close about a hundred and eighty street robberies. So I would, I would definitely suggest that it stopped our street patterns.
Thank you. Anyone else to say from the Southeast? We'll move on to the Eastern District, Colonel, I mean, Colonel Worley.
Eastern District has eight homicides compared to six last year. It's up thirty-three percent. Fifteen shootings compared to seven is up a hundred and fourteen percent. Rapes, seven to eight, down thirteen percent. Robberies, they're at sixty to seventy, they're down fourteen percent. Aggravated assaults are up thirty-five percent, one fifteen to eighty-five. Burglaries are down eighteen percent, eighty-nine to one oh nine. Larcenies are down thirteen percent. Auto thefts are down twenty-nine percent. Violent crime is up twelve percent, one ninety to one sixty-nine. Property crime is down three forty-one to four twelve, which is seventeen percent, and overall Part One is down nine percent.
Thank you. Can we talk about the Eastern homicides first, like where they are? Are they in the same areas, connected maybe? So my colleagues that represent deeper East Baltimore, they're not here, but I can relay the information to them.
So I can tell you that you've had twenty-three hundred Hoffman Street, within the last twenty-eight days, you've had twenty-three hundred Hoffman Street. You've had three hundred East Twenty-Second Street, sixteen hundred North Durham Street, sixteen hundred North Durham Street, and fifteen hundred block of Cliffview. The majority of those cases are, are open. Three hundred East Twenty-Second Street is closed. The majority of the names that are the victims, we're very familiar with, some of the families there, but I'll let Colonel Worley talk about deployment for those areas.
Basically, what we have, we have the District Act, there are four District Action Teams in the, in the Eastern. So they have two on Monument Street and two that usually can work Darley Park, but they also have the, the autonomy to move them wherever they need to. We, we will move them when we see something spike somewhere else, but those two areas are the main areas that we have to hold, hold down in order to win, win the Eastern. I think we will. They started off really well last year, and they kind of blew up at the end, and we're trying to avoid that this year.
Thank you. And they still seem to be having a issue with commercial robberies, and then they've also had some home invasions. Can we talk about those a little bit?
So the pattern cases that they've had has been the Red Taurus carjacking pattern. Carjackings are up there. We do have some persons of interest there as well. And then we have the, the bank robbery pattern that kind of touches the Eastern District. If you take a look at it, it was on a Tuesday, two thousand and eight East Monument Street. That was a commercial. So I don't have anything that would suggest that we are going to close anything within a short amount of time, but I can tell you that they're working diligently on those cases.
And what's going to help both the Eastern and, and the Southeast is we just, we just intensified our Neighborhood Coordination Officers. The Southeast never had them. They now have a sergeant and two, and the Eastern now has a sergeant and five. So they'll be able to do some of those other things, visiting businesses and bring the information to VRI for the businesses that need attention and for the vacant houses. So they all just finished three days of training through Lieutenant Colonel Briscoe, where they did really well. And what we're going to try to do is they're going to go back and now teach all the officers. I want to tell them, we want them to teach themselves out of a job and make all the officers NCOs, but that, basically, that's what we want them to do, is go back and teach them all the stuff that they've learned through the three-one-one app and all the training that they've gotten as NCOs.
Colonel, I'm glad you brought that up. I want to make sure that Mr. Amheros hears this. We have to also make sure that, that BCIT is providing them with training on the enters three-one-one system so that they're not consistently looking at the app. This is something that drove me nuts a few years ago when I found out that, one, officers are having to put in three-one-one through the app, when, as you know, as someone who worked here for many years, that it would be more efficient for them to be able to put them in through the city's inner systems, because they can put them in multiples at a time instead of having to put in one by one. But we can, we need to make sure that that coordination is happening so that these officers can be more, more efficient. And Colonel, because specifically in response to the carjacking question, and I know this is something that you guys hear me talk about every month, and I'm saying it now because the Commissioner's here, because I want him to ask us for more of these, how are we doing with LPRs? And how, how are we doing with traffic? Because I think just being a Baltimore boy and knowing how people travel through the city, especially those who are not frequent, frequently visiting one side of town versus the next, I think that we, if we had more LPRs and we had the ability to do more of these traffic initiatives, we will be able to recover people's property more so, but also put folks who are actually threatening people's lives with guns behind bars more often. Where are we with LPRs and how are we? I know that we have the partnership with State Police and the other agencies, but for our own internal use, where are we with those?
Well, we should, we, we will enhance our training greatly, because what happened is at the end of last year, we had, we have ten cars in the Eastern, ten cars in the Western that are equipped with LPRs. The problem was, the majority of the officers in both districts had not been trained to use the LPR, so they couldn't. So we tried to get training, but as we ended the year, the State Police couldn't come to give us training until the end of, I believe it was the end of January. And then they trained, I think, a hundred more officers. And then it just last week, they did a train the trainers. So now we have five or six people in our department that we don't need the State Police anymore to train them, so they can put on our own training and train all of our, our own officers. Also, what we did is we, we basically asked for permission to move one of them because it's a fund, it's a, a grant. So we, they have to stay in the Eastern and the Western, but we got permission to move them to the Northeast when we knew we had that robbery, carjacking pattern, and they were able to help solve that case. And all, all the, the grant Bloomberg won it, was the good news information about that. So we were able to move them. Now they're back in the, back in the Eastern and the Western. We just got to get the cars, because I think today it was only six of the cars were operational. So we've got to get all the equipment repaired and get the guys using them.
So you mean, by operational, do you mean they're at DGS getting repaired?
Yes.
Okay.
Or they've been involved in accidents and been, have to go to be repaired.
Mr. Amheros, that's another task for you, sir. We have to make sure that these cars are making it out of DGS and back onto the street in an, in an efficient, much efficient way as possible.
And we've got to do a better job of it as well.
We've been rejoined by Councilman Chris Burnett from the Eighth District, Member of the Committee.
And just to add on to what the Colonel was saying, Lieutenant Colonel Lewis, CID, we have a total of seventy LPRs. Forty-seven are in a patrol function, and we have twenty-three that are at fixed locations. And currently, Major Hood assigned to City Watch is working to get funding to have LPRs also put outside of all hospitals throughout the city, because we do have victims of crime that get dropped off the hospital, so we can get tag numbers of individuals being dropped off. So that's something he's actively working on, and we also have the LPRs at the casino.
Thank you.
And the other ones that, that other, above the twenty are in the MMU unit. So plus the one thing we did in patrol, which they, to be honest, the vehicles were being underutilized before. So what we've done is when we went back to post, we've actually assigned a car to a post. So that car is actually running twenty-four seven, so there's no reason for that LPR not to, not to be running twenty-four seven. So that's also why some of them are going out of service a little bit, because they got to get repaired, because they're running twenty-four seven now.
Yes, sir. Colonel. Oh, Deputy.
I would also add also, sir, that Mobile Metro unit is still in effect, and the, the Tenth District is still there as well, so those assets are in play. They also have LPRs as well, and they are doing the work that we need them to do as it relates to these robberies and how the patterns that the Colonel talked about going from one part of the city to the other. So all of those assets are still in play for us.
And I just want to add that the communication has, has improved as well. I think from the time that the officers and detectives were getting that information, it wasn't going to the proper, to MCAT. It's actually going on our server now, so we have, and we have access to it as well. So I think that improved as well. Just looking at how the response is of the detective and the officer, I think they're getting that information a lot quicker.
And City Watch also has at their, at their facility, they, as soon as you get an LPR hit, they get on the radio, and if we have cameras, they put the camera on the car and patrol is responding, trying to catch it. We've called a couple of them, several of them have got away by the time we get to them, but, because they're in mo, in motion. But City Watch is greatly involved in it as well.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the Northeast District.
Who's the Councilman there?
Homicides are even, six at six. The non-fatal shootings are down twenty-two percent, seven compared to nine. Rapes are down fifty-six percent, four compared to nine. Robberies are down forty-one percent, one oh two compared to one seventy-three. Ag assaults are down thirty-one percent, one oh two to one forty-seven. Burglaries are down twenty-six percent, one forty-eight to two hundred. Auto thefts are down thirty-two percent, one thirty-seven to two hundred. And total violent crime is down thirty-six percent. Property crime is down twenty-eight percent, and total reduction is thirty percent overall.
Thank you.
Thank you, nothing.
Yeah, no. No, I just, we, no, they, they've done a great job. Major Preston and Captain Murphy's done a great job. The community is actually very happy with, with the leadership there. I can tell that on the lack of complaints that I, that I get every day. But I do want to make sure that we continue to pay attention to the areas that we know that we have to pay attention to. We've had an incident in Bella Edison recently, and we know in the past, one incident, as you know, Colonel, there can sprawl out into seven or eight, and, and, as all three of you know, in a very quick fashion. But I think they've done a great job. Everything else, I think they've been good with. One, convenience store robberies, of course, one I know intimately because it's right by my house, but I think that overall, the district is doing very well.
Yes, sir.
So we will move on to the Northern District.
Northern homicides are down forty percent, three compared to five. Non-fatal shootings, down seventeen percent, five compared to six. Rapes are down fifty percent, three compared to six. Robberies, down twenty-one percent, twenty-eight compared to ninety-nine. Ag assaults, down nineteen percent, fifty-four compared to sixty-seven. Burglaries, down fifty percent, seventy-eight to one fifty-five. Auto thefts are up seventy-eight to sixty-six, that's up eighteen percent, and arsons are two to one, basically up one hundred percent. Violent crimes, down twenty-two percent. Property crime, down twenty-one, and overall Part One is down twenty-one.
Thank you. Councilman Scheifler, Northern District questions? So Colonel, can we talk about the auto thefts? I'll self-admit that one of them is my grandmother. She did not heed my messages about leaving the keys in her car, and she had a, we were actually, Regional Auto Theft Task Force recovered the car in like an hour, we were able to make the arrest of, of the young gentleman that stole the car. But do we know if Major Gibson does what you did and some other commanders do, and tell us how many of these cars are being stolen with the keys in them versus not with the keys in them?
I know every day when he reports out, he reports out that majority of, probably fifty percent of them are stolen with the keys in them, because they're warming the cars up. Hopefully, hopefully that'll...
That'll drop down.
...fade away as the weather gets warmer, but then they'll just come out and warm it up for the air conditioning, so.
So I think that it would be critical for us to, to know that information moving forward, because that then again helps us to send information out to our constituents saying, you know, listen, we have to drive down... we have to drive down this incidence of stealing cars, and it can be very simple. If you don't have keys in it, it's not going to get stolen.
You know Rich does that outstanding in the community engagement.
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. And same thing with larceny from autos, not leaving them unlocked.
That's a good point, Councilman. I just talked to Drew about that. We're going to see if we can capture that data. Obviously, trying to tie in those public service messages to our citizens and your constituents as well is equally important. Yes, sir.
I've seen Major Gibson post multiple times about leaving the keys in the cars and the car running.
And also, if we, Colonel, though you know a way to make an impact on that, if the officers are also giving out the fine for having the keys in the car, which is illegal under Maryland state law.
They'd have to give your grandma a ticket.
You can give my grandma one at your own peril. She, no, she's probably watching right now. You'll give my grandma one at your own peril that I'll leave that up to. That's Major Gibson's problem. We'll move on to the Northwest District.
All right. Yes, sir. Homicides are even, five at five. Non-fatal shootings are even, 12 at 12. Did you have something, Byron?
No, I don't. I mean, it's going to be 30,000 for you, so we're always concerned about that upper and lower part of Park Heights that kind of drives their crime there. So we do have one case closed there. One was very interesting that we had, we're getting information that it was individuals going around and they were taking hits. So we were, you know, looking at several different cases within that area, and that's as much as I can say about that.
Rapes are up one, six compared to five. Robberies are down 15%, 87 to 102. Ag assaults are up 11%, 89 to 80. Burglaries are down 25%, 88 to 117. Larstonies are up 7%, 232 to 216. Auto thefts, down 14%, 89 to 103. Arson's, two to four, down 50%. And total violent crime is down 3%. Property crime is down seven, which overall, crime is down five.
And from the robbery standpoint, we're looking at the past note, commercial robbery pattern. It looks like the Northwest has the majority of those cases. So we're definitely keeping an eye on that case.
Councilman Pinkett.
No, that's exactly where I was going with the robberies. And then in addition to that, it's been brought to my attention, especially in the Hanlon community, an uptick in robberies. I know of at least one involving youth. And so in an area where typically aren't, you know, that level of street robbery. And so just asking for, you know, some attention to that. Goes without saying, the residents are on high alert. They've been sending me videos of individuals who've been, you know, from security cameras from the homes picking up people. At least two incidents where people were robbed, so just asking for some attention in that area.
Hopefully, we've received those videos. I mean, we generally, I know the Northwest has a very robust initiative as it relates to the Ring Door Bells and CCTV cameras and people's phones.
Yeah, I inquired. I think they did make certain that Major Brickus has, you know, all of that. I will make certain, if that hasn't, if that's not the case, I'll make certain that that does happen.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Scheifler?
Yeah, a couple of questions. You were mentioning about the rapes. They're up, they're up five to six. Was there one the other night, like last night or two nights ago? You have the list over there, the locations, like one on Clark's and Park Heights or something?
I can get back to you, Councilman. I can get back to you on that. Yes, sir.
What was the location, sir? I'm sorry?
Somebody just called like an hour ago before the hearing and said that there was some type of rape on Clark's and Park Heights. I wasn't sure what the story was with that, so I figured, since you mentioned it, if you can get back to me. The second thing is, as far as the commercial robberies that are going on, is there something in place to start addressing that? I know there's tremendous amount of video footage. I know the different organizations up there and the businesses up there work closely with Major Brickus, and I know they've been getting a lot of footage, but is there something that's citywide being done to address that?
Yeah, well, on the patrol point, and then I'll let Colonel Conway to get into it, the CID point. But patrol is just business checks, business checks, business checks. So we're instilling for them to get business checks. Now that we've got them doing them, now we've got to get them to do them correctly. So when they get out of their car, they spend five, 10, 15, at least 15, 20 minutes there where they're used to, patrol officers are used to going from call to call to call. So now they're spending five to 10 minutes there. We want them to spend 10 to 20 minutes there. Walk around the outside, talk to the business owner, sign the book, get to know the people in there. And that we can deter it that way and then let the detectives work after we do have an incident.
Is there like a checklist that goes into that or is it just, you know, shopping center to shopping center? Because, I mean, I did see an officer that was doing business checks, and I noticed that they were also going into like shopping centers and other places where the businesses were already closed down. And so obviously, you do want to drive through and keep an eye on this and don't get robbed after hours. But is there like, you know, and then I also noticed that some of the businesses were just being passed over. So how do they decide where they go?
It's basically up to the officer discretion. They should be going into every one. Maybe they just hit half of them on one turn, half on the other turn because we got them getting out. And what they have to do, we monitor it. We actually got one while we were here. Breakdown of how many business checks each district does by post. So we get that on a regular basis, and we monitor it to see how much time. That's how we know that we need them to spend a little more time there. But he only has a certain amount of time to do, or she has a certain amount of time to do the business checks because they've got to also answer, the same officers are answering the 911 calls.
Right. Are you guys doing dummy cars anymore, like at locations that are hotspots? What's that?
We can't disclose that information, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That's a tactic. Sir, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Western District.
All right. Western, six homicides compared to five. They're up 20%. Non-fatal shootings, 20 to 15, up 33%. Rapes, down 78%, two to nine. Robberies, up 35%, 74 to 55. Ag assaults, up 13%, 96 to 85. Burglaries, down 21%, 65 to 82. Larstonies are up 7%, 160 to 149. Auto thefts, down 19%, 50 to 62. Arson's, down 50%, two to four. Violent crime is up 16%, 178 to 154. And property crime is down 7%, 277 to 297, which is a 1% increase in overall Part One crime.
Councilman Pinkett.
No, so from my side, there have been 13 non-fatal shootings and eight homicides. Of course, just like the deputy talked about a little bit earlier, the majority of the crime is in the Western District. Most of my assets on the ACS side is in the Western District. As well as we are kind of concentrating, especially in that 800 block of Appleton. That's a concern of ours. We've had several incidents there. Monroe, 1500 West Fayette Street. So there's several areas within the Western District that we're very concerned about. I can tell you that we're kind of revisiting some of the incidents that we had last year around this time. And I'm not going to talk too much about that investigation, but we are starting to see signs of that brewing up again.
Thank you. I guess we'll just start the obvious, the Appleton and having incidents on the same. We just shouldn't have that. Like, it's unacceptable to have that. Can we talk about, I guess, this ties in, and Mr. Commissioner, I know that you'll be developing a plan that will be disseminated out to the officers. But can we talk about how, where we think we missed the ball on that? And what we're going to change moving forward? Like, are we making sure that when we're talking to the officers and after action and these incidents, that they have things that they should be doing, especially in areas that we know historically have violence? And is this kind of information that Colonel Conway shared that we all know be sharing down to the level of patrol officers so that they can be as proactive as possible while we're still trying to figure out a way to make them not answer call to call to call? But just to have that kind of incident happen so close together in the same proximity is unacceptable.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct with that, sir. I would say to you that one of the things that obviously with the new scheduling, it enabled us to have officers on post responsible for manning those posts, making sure that they are doing those things that they need to do. And obviously, now we have direct supervision over top of squads as opposed to before. I can tell you in the Appleton case that one of the first things we always look at when an incident occurs like that is what was the officer doing just prior or what led up to that incident and then afterwards? In each one of those cases, in the last one in particular, the officer had just left that area, was actually backing up someone. We know that the last incident was in the house also, not making excuses. But that's certainly one of the situations along with that particular incident there. And I know Colonel Conway may talk about some other things. But in terms of what we're doing from a patrol enforcement, we are using a lot of analytics as well as intelligence gathering, as well as just good commanding officers, knowing their geography, knowing their space, knowing what's needed, knowing what the dosage is. As I started out earlier today, we talked about specifically about West Baltimore. Last year, it was 40% or more of our crime. It's trending that way again. We are, as the Colonel alluded to in his presentation, we are doing everything we can in terms of allocating resources in the West Baltimore. We must win the West this year, and we know that. Not saying that we're neglecting any other parts of the city because we're not. Everybody needs to be held accountable for what they're doing in those districts. But we are certainly having an emphasis in West Baltimore.
And as you know, the Western, at the time, they had moved their deployment, some deployment down to the Fayette Mount where they had two homicides the night before, and then the other deployment was on Pennsylvania Avenue. You know, they've got so many areas that they have to move from place to place. But now we've got a, Major Webb put together a really comprehensive plan yesterday to get in there and try to get some intel with all of our other agencies and units within the department. Plus, we're going to go, we're actually walking in the Western on Thursday night at 7 o'clock if you want to come out and join us.
And then also for that, is the Western an area where we're working with outside agencies too to try to get their help?
Absolutely. The majority of my push is in the Western.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett.
And I'd like to join that walk if I can. And I know that Major Webb and his team, I know he's grinding, so I don't have any doubts, you know, about that. But I mean, he's got a rough district. And I'm curious, how is technology helping us? Because like a lot of times I'll hear, you know, for example, the officers responded as a result of ShotSpotter. I mean, is it, are we getting, is it helping to solve?
It absolutely is. I'll let Drew kind of talk about some of the things we're doing in West Baltimore. Obviously, the Western District is one of our SDSC rooms. They'll give you an update with that and also some of that.
And if you can also speak to the fact that I know there was, I think, some more deployment of cameras in West Baltimore. And so just curious, you know, if these new investments are yielding results, you know, in public safety?
In terms of cameras, I can say that they absolutely do help. I mean, we are communicating. We're communicating and seeing vehicle descriptions, tags, suspects, you know, different captured events on video like daily. So absolutely, that's worth the investment.
And before we go, which means that, you know, I know the city has limited resources, but I mean, if we're getting the residual, you know, result from those kinds of investments, then you all need to be asking for more as it relates to technology. Because the reality is we don't have enough officers to be everywhere. So in some instances, we just got to use technology where we can use it to replace, you know, to adjust the fact that we can't put an officer on every corner. But it doesn't mean that we can't use the technology that's available to kind of cover those gaps.
Yes, sir. We will. Thank you. Thanks for more.
Yeah, so I've tasked Drew, and Drew can kind of touch on a little bit more of this. But for right now, I'm saying that we need a case management system to track the solvability of some of these cases that would actually, it would increase in our non-fatal shootings, which would decrease in our homicides. Because if you take a look at, if we get 700 or 600 non-fatal shootings, right, eventually, somebody's going to retaliate. So we got to slow that down. I would love a knibber machine. If you take a look at the time in which it takes, and Steve Odell does a great job. But if I could get a knibber machine to give me that information right after we get a handgun violation, that's ammunition, pardon my French, that's ammunition that I have, that my detectives have, that when they do that investigation, we can look in the direction of that case. And right now, if we make a handgun violation, I really don't know what that handgun comes back to until much, you know, he's back out on the street, receiving another gun. The other thing that I would say is the cameras are great, and just like the Commissioner alluded to with recruitment, we can have all the cameras we want, but if we don't have the camera operators, then it makes no difference. So we definitely need to hire more camera operators so that we can, you know, have the majority of those people looking at the majority of the city. We did breakdowns of top street gun segments, and we need definitely more camera operators.
No, you're definitely right about the cameras because I was going to make a request that I'd like to go into the room where, you know, people are monitoring the cameras because I see dudes standing under the cameras all day long. And I'm just like, I don't know, I don't know who's watching this camera because clearly, clearly nobody is. But although the camera's in place.
Some of the issues with the cameras as you go up, because we ran into this when we had the incident of the young lady, the little girl shot on Baker McKean, Moser McKean. Part of the problem is we tried to get a camera put up right there, and the fiber's not there to put the camera there. So we'd have to put internet one, which don't work. They just do not work very well. So as soon as the fiber gets there, we can start putting the cameras up.
So I think, Councilman, sorry to interrupt, but one second, Lieutenant Colonel. Colonel Conway, we have been told that the information about guns coming from the crime lab is now coming back faster than it has before. And that is actually one of the fastest labs in the city. So I think the last time I heard that was roughly taken like 40, 45 days for it to come back. Is that still the case?
No. So in many instances, it's coming back within four days, four to five days, which is great. But again, if we're going to deploy, me knowing that ABC Street was related to 123 Street, then it would be a lot better for me to, you know, forward that information to the DC and the Colonel for deployment purposes. Right now, we're way behind the eight ball with deployment because of those reasons.
And what is needed in order for us to get to the point where we're giving you that information, let's say in 24 to 48 hours?
Knibber machines.
Does any?
I don't know that that's an ask for this council. I think that's an ask. Because last week, I met with the Deputy Attorney General of the United States with the US Attorney, and so.
Mr. Commissioner, if you could raise the mic up a little bit.
I did not ask for that specific item, but we did talk about the needs of the Baltimore Police Department with the Deputy Attorney General of the US and who made a commitment to give us all the resources. And certainly, there's a meeting with the ATF Special Agent that I have on my calendar now.
Great.
And so I'm glad to hear that. So it can point me in the right direction. But the federal government has said they're willing and able and are on board with us to help us here.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Councilman Pinkett.
I feel comfortable saying this on behalf of this council and the President of the council. While we will always stress accountability and fiscal stewardship, we are about public safety and about making certain that you have the tools in order to do what you need to do. And so you're going to always have a partner in this council about getting you the men and women that you need, but also getting the tools that you need in order to keep, you know, our city safe. So consider us a partner in that.
Yes, sir. And we should also, Commissioner, at a later date, we'll probably have a particular hearing in just about City Watch because I think this is something that myself and my colleagues have been trying to push to have changed. We had this discussion last year versus whether we should have a plane in the sky versus hiring more people to watch City Watch cameras, which we think is more beneficial. So we will move on to the Southwest District.
Sir. Southwest has, they're 10 homicides compared to five last year. Non-fatal shootings are 10 compared to four. Rapes are down 45%, six compared to 11. Robberies are down 15%, 63 compared to 74. Ag assaults are up 25%, 111 to 89. Burglaries down eighteen percent, one-oh-eight to one-thirty-one. Auto thefts are one, basically one up, one-hundred-and-one to one-hundred. And overall violent crime is up six percent, one-ninety to one-seventy-nine. Property crime is up two percent, four-fifty-six to four-forty-eight. And overall part one crime is up three percent.
And before, before we go to my colleague, Councilman Burnett, just to go back to Councilman Pinkett's point about the ShotSpotter, if next month and Mr. Amero says a response, so can we have as a follow-up, let's just say, last year in its entirety and then this year, year-to-date, the amount of ShotSpotter hits versus, you know, actual arrests that we have from ShotSpotter that will be beneficial to us? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we, sorry, I'm trying to, and I'd like to third the technology question as well. And I believe at the last hearing, Mr. Chair did request additional information. I think we still have to meet Lieutenant Colonel to talk about the requests submitted last time around ShotSpotter, CityWatch, the command center rooms in the East and West District. There was, I had a question at the last hearing around outcome data, similar line of questioning that we've gotten tonight. So I would, you know, I think it's a great idea to have that as a stand-alone. Excuse my low energy, just left a vigil for a young man, sixteen years old, who, who was killed. And, you know, it's just, you know, one of those things that does not get easier. And I know in your work, it doesn't get easier as well. You know, one of the, the challenging areas of the Southwest has been the Edmonton Avenue and Frederick Avenue corridors. Whether those be fatal shootings, non-fatal shootings, assaults, all seems to be centered around that, those corridors. And I believe that would probably extend into the Western boundary as well. Can we, can we talk a little bit about what's being done there, what you're seeing on the ground in those, in those particular, particular spots?
I can tell you one thing we did, and I'm going to let Drew get into it a little bit more, is we're polluting in the Southwest District with a, a comprehensive crime plan that was developed with the majors and with IT. So they've got, they've got basically street segments or segments in each post that they're required to check every fifteen, fifteen minutes, every, what, two hours, I believe it is?
Twice per tour. Oh, I'm sorry. Twice per tour, that they spend approximately fifteen, twenty minutes in there. And within each of these kind of micro-geographies, we looked environmentally, kind of what some of the environmental levers might have been that may be perpetuating the violent crime. We're kind of looking at this as kind of a tier-one, level-one plan to begin to understand what is perpetuating the crime, what is, you know, what can we do, not even just from a law enforcement side, but how can the police department leverage other city agencies to really address and have sustaining reductions in violent crime at some of these micro-geographies where there is that kind of overt, over-representation of violence every year?
I think an added-on point to that also is that we are making our, our officers more task or mission-oriented. The days of really discretionary patrolling are not, we're not there anymore. So now officers have specific tasks, whether it's checking on businesses, interacting with the community, car stops, or checking gore checks, or just knock and talk on individuals on parole and probation. Those type of things, they're real mission-oriented type of policing to cause disruption within geography that we know are problematic as it relates to crime.
And as you know, we're targeting some of the problematic businesses. That, you know about the gas station, we just brought in a business on Woodington End for a padlock meeting. And we're constantly bringing businesses in almost once or twice a week. And basically just telling them, we need you to cooperate with us and do these changes with cameras. And the majority, the good thing is, the majority of them are cooperating. We got some really good video from, from nine-hundred Monroe. So we've got, we've got some really good stuff going on with, with using technology.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to the Southern District.
Southern is four homicides compared to five last year, ten shootings compared to four. Rapes, four compared to seven, down forty-three percent. Robberies, one-oh-three to one-oh-one, it's up twenty-two percent. Aggravated assaults, down five percent, eighty to eighty-four. Burglaries up eight percent, one-twenty-eight to one-nineteen. Larssneys up four percent, two-seventy-seven to two-sixty-seven. And auto thefts down thirteen percent, fifty-eight to sixty-seven. Overall violent crime is up seven percent, property crimes up two percent, overall part one is up three percent.
Thank you. I think first, if we can talk about non-fatales, I know that we have non-fatal shootings.
So, sir, we had one on nine-hundred Seagull that is closed, that was a, a double shooting. So there's no use talking about that one. Twelve-hundred Holland Street, we had a homicide there. And then we had a non-fatal shooting at thirteen-hundred Potomac.
Thank you. Also, they, they seem to, this is where a lot of the robberies happen, especially street robberies. So Colonel, are there patterns that we made arrests or are there things that we can share with both?
So, so as the Councilman is familiar, that outer bond, street pattern that we have, we do have individuals in that, that case. The last time they hit was on three-eleven. And it looks like they went, they concentrated, more concentrated on the Southern District from two-fourteen to two-twenty-seven. So the majority of the month, they concentrated within that Southern District line.
Councilman?
The response from BPD and, and the presence on the South Baltimore Peninsula is greatly appreciated. I know that things have been extremely quiet on the peninsula, knock on wood. So I appreciate all the effort that BPD has put in. Also, give credit where credit's due in response to the incidents in Ridgely's Delight. We had five or six incidents in a seven-day period about a month and a half ago. And that's pretty much curbed as well. So I appreciate the response from the department.
Thank you. The last few questions that we have is for information purposes. So can you guys provide, if you have it, calls for service year-to-date and broken down by district? Thank you.
Call the service year-to-date is going to be from one-one, twenty-nineteen till March the eighteenth, twenty-nineteen.
Lieutenant Colonel, can you pull the mic up? They're still recording, that's why.
Okay. So the total calls for service, we have two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-nine. If you want to start by district, I'm going to start with the Central first.
Yes, ma'am.
They had twenty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Southeast, twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-two. Eastern, nineteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-six. Northeastern, twenty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-five. Northern, eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two. Northwestern, nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-four. Western, twenty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five. Southwestern, twenty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five. Southern, twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-two.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Also, does, can we guys provide year-to-date, how many calls we've taken through TRU and online through CopLogic?
In reference to TRU, out of those two-thousand-and-ten-six-oh-nine numbers, TRU has taken twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight reports. And I can break it down per district for TRU?
Yes, ma'am.
For Central District, it's three-thousand-eighty-three. Southeast, two-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-six. Northeastern, thirty-five-hundred. Northern, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-six. Northwestern, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven. Western, one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-six. Southwest, two-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten. Southern, one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty.
Lieutenant Colonel, you missed the Eastern.
You missed the Eastern. The Eastern was, did I skip it? I'll get you the Eastern.
Thank, yes, ma'am. And what about online, CopLogic? So, Mr. Commissioner, this is, this is something that I know you and I agree with. We have to dramatically increase that, especially since the system itself, when we do the printout, it prints out for us the amount of dollars saved and man-hours saved, which is something that we all in this room are drastically trying to change. So we, consider us a partner in trying to push, push that out, especially myself. We have to get that information out to the public. Yes, it's going to be a cultural shock to people, but I think that we all know that it'll make the department better in the long run.
And Councilman, just in reference to the CopLogic online self-reporting, you pretty much can only do six reports.
Right.
And that will be illegal dumping, lost property, theft, theft of veh, theft from a vehicle, vandalism of property in a vehicle. It's only six reports that you can actually fill out online.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I think, and I think that's, for me, Colonel, I think that that makes it even easier for us. For example, we, we've had nine-hundred-and-two larceny from autos this year. And we now, we know that almost all of them, which ones were not taken by TRU, have been handled by an actual officer. And we could push that stuff to online and we can have a much more efficient police department. Colonel? Yeah, if it's in progress, we know that it could happen, but, you know. Thank you. The next question is about gun arrests. Where are we with gun arrests year-to-date?
As of last week, we were at two-hundred and, I want to say, two-hundred-and-thirty-four arrests. But we recovered two-hundred-and-eight. That was as of last week.
And Colonel, can, for next month, when we do that, can we have the breakdown by district? But then also, I think what should be, what help us in our efforts to give you guys the resources and the laws passed to target people who are bringing guns into the city from other locations? If we could have the location of the persons, the individuals, where they live from, if they're out of state, if they're out jurisdictional. As you know, many, Colonel, of the folks that we catch in guns in northeast Baltimore actually live in surrounding jurisdictions. I think that would arm the council and the legislature in Annapolis with more information to show people why we have to target people who are traveling guns via state and to travel, but also from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Thank you. Any other questions from our colleagues?
So, so, sir, we do have them broken down by-
I got them.
Oh, yes.
I have everything except the Southern. There must have been something wrong with the formula, because I know those numbers are exactly, are not right.
Yes, sir.
But the Central is thirty-one last year compared to twenty this year. Southeast is seventy-five compared to sixty-two, fifty-two. Eastern is thirty-seven compared to twenty-nine. Northeast, twenty-five compared to eleven. Northern, twenty-three compared to twenty-two. Northwest, twenty-seven compared to eleven. Western is twenty-six compared to fifteen. And the Southwest is twenty-two compared to twenty-nine.
What about the Southern?
That's, the Southern's the one that said had the, something wrong with the formula, it didn't show out right.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions from-
It's patrol.
It's patrol, right. It doesn't include the Colonel's shot, yes, sir. Does, any other questions from any of my colleagues? I don't believe there's anyone signed up to testify tonight, one person, ma'am. Please come forward. Thank you for being here tonight and staying through hours of hearings.
Thank you very much.
Please speak into the microphone, tell us your name, please.
My name is Cindy Walsh, and I'm with Citizens Oversight Maryland.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a political activist. I just want to take a few minutes-
Ms. Walsh, you can move behind the podium, that's okay.
I'd rather-
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted you to be comfortable.
I'm comfortable. I'd like to point out a-
You have to speak into the mic, this is being recorded.
I would like to point out that there was, there is a criminal element in the city that is being neglected. And I have found out about it over the last several months, having found out that I am a victim of that criminal network. And it's an important thing for our police officers to know about it because it's happening in such, such a great number in my community and around the city. And it needs to be addressed. And so, for example, I'm using one, one example. A building owner has three floors of tenants in a row house. The building owner has tenants who have a proclivity to plant illegal surveillance devices in those buildings. A building owner could have a network that came in and attached illegal surveillance network and equipment to the outside of the building. A building owner could have that network actually tap into their fuse box and, and completely capture by hacking the entire electrical system and everything that's plugged into it. Take that one example. It's saturated in my community, I'm in Charles Village. It's saturated around the city. And so you have a network of illegal surveillance that leads to pornography and a large revenue scheme that's black market. And so what I'm trying to suggest, I'm, number one, I want to suggest, if the police department really feels that this is too large of an issue for them, they should call the Federal Justice Department because it's a Rico racketeering network. And I am not a police officer. But within several months of knowing that I was exposed to this, I have been able to figure out the entire system, the operation, the, the network, who's there, how they do the revenue. So it would be very easy for our police department to do that.
Ms. Walsh, before you go any further, I think that this, this is a situation where we should, when the hearing is over, partner you up with someone from the police department and make sure that they follow up. I don't want you to go any further with putting yourself exposed. Oh, and he's already, okay, great. So I don't want you to expose yourself any further.
No, no. So I just want to make three points for the police officers.
Well, Ms. Walsh, actually, you have to address us, not, not the police department.
Now, first of all, I, I called a police officer several months ago when I first noticed that I was having trouble with the, you know, set of the details. The police officer came through to my house. He went through the house. I told him that I, you know, I was feeling that neighbors or whatever were, were surveilling me. And I, you know, it wasn't a legal kind of thing. Well, that officer came through my house, stood for a second and said, well, there's no, nothing. There's, there's nothing here. There's no illegal surveillance, there's no equipment, I don't see anything. And then as he went out of my house, he walked through there saying, "A building owner can put a, a camera in any room of this building if he wants." Now, that was a police officer, and I think it's your district, you're, you're Charles Village, right?
Ma'am, no. Again, Ms. Walsh, first we have, you have someone else to testify.
Okay, oh, well, I'm trying, I'm just trying to be informative. I'm just trying to be informative. So what I'm trying to say is that this police officer came at me as not someone who was making a complaint and being possibly a victim of a crime. But he was trying to intimidate me and trying to tell me that I was bothering the neighbor that I suspected being an illegal surveiller. And he told me that, that anybody could put cameras in any room of my house and it would be perfectly legal. And of course, we have a tenant landlord laws that say landlord, even the landlord, even the building owner cannot put surveillance equipment in your, your house. That's privacy issues.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Walsh, we're going to, we're going to ask you to wrap it up. There's someone else to testify. You've been able to give the information to the police commissioner, he'll make sure that someone follows up with you.
One more example. I, I was at the University of Maryland, Baltimore. One more example, um, I, uh, I was at the University of Maryland, Baltimore, um, I've noticed that there is a considerable vulnerability in the, in the bathrooms, uh, specifically the women's bathrooms for capture of the light elements, uh, I, I, in particular, felt that I was vulnerable, and I filed a complaint with that police department, uh, but I think they fall under the venue of the-
They do not, actually, they do not, University of Maryland, so what I will tell you to do, that University of Maryland Baltimore's police fall under the University of Maryland system, you would be able to take that complaint either to the University of Maryland Board, but also to either your state representative, your state senator, your state delegate, or the governor of Maryland would be the people to hear that complaint.
Okay. Finally, I would like the, you, you discussed it somewhat, uh, when you said that we have public surveillance structures all over our neighborhoods, uh, whether it's along the streets and sidewalks, whether it's in the alleys, and the, the police officers, I, I know they don't have time to sit there and surveil the whole video feed that comes from all of that, but this uh problem that I just related to you is so saturated and so open that the chatter that they're putting out there in that, in that uh network is enough to allow someone like me to, to gather information and create lawsuits, which is what I'm in the process of doing, uh, but I don't, I think it's something that a, the police department should be doing.
Well, they will, and thank you for coming to testify, we're gonna move on to the next person, we'll thank you, we'll make sure that the police commissioner and, and his folks follow up to make sure that you and your neighbors are being held safe, and please be sure to follow with your state representatives about the incidents with University of Maryland.
Absolutely, I am.
Thank you.
I am doing that, thank you very much.
Patricia Truex?
Yes.
Good evening, ma'am, thank you for being here.
Yes, um-
Pull the mic down, Mr. Ex, a little bit. Thank you.
Yes, I was listening to the lady, and I've had problems with cameras being in the house that I rent, in the bathroom, and so there's been some internet pictures put on the internet of me that I did not post on.
Oh, wow.
This has just gotten to be ridiculous, and so, you know, I have called the police there, and um he said he couldn't see anything, but there's, this little light, and it can be turned off, I'm not gonna say how, but um I have figured that out, and uh this is just an imposition on me.
Yes, ma'am.
I've become a public figure, and I don't want anything like that, so I'll be talking with others and see what I can get done about that.
Yeah, well, Mr. Ex, what we'll do also is when the hearing is over, we, the commissioner will make sure that he or some members of his staff follow up you to make sure that they get copies of those pictures and things like that, because they can, they have people that can trace those things down and traces down the individual, so we just don't want you to publicly have to share anymore that you already didn't have, didn't want to be shared with us here today, we're gonna make sure that issue gets solved, but we wanted to do it in a, in a private fashion so that you-
All right.
-get the help that you need.
All right.
And thank you, don't go anywhere.
Councilman, before you-
Yes, ma'am, Colonel.
The Eastern District, I wanted to give to you before we left, it's two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty for the Eastern.
Thank you so much, with that, seeing no more questions, this committee stands in recess till that, next month, thank you so much for being here.